Okay, Renee. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Perkins?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
All right, council, you received minutes from the June 23 meeting. Comments or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes June 23.
Fine.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Yes, I received current expenses. Any questions?
I just had a question on the first one, the Ohio Water Development Board is what it was for?
It's for the water loans and sewer. Twice a year.
I had a question as far as the one on the Tribune.
That is probably.
I think that was for the DZA.
Okay. Might be. I'm trying to see the amount. I'm trying to find it real quick. Is it four or something?
Four seven three.
That is actually for the Valentine.
Oh, that was the notice that we gave?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would have been based on a bill that we just forwarded on.
The Valentine notice. You have a motion? Just no more questions?
Move to approve current expenses.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Great. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One, just to say again, thank Leslie and Colleen for their work on the fourth two line. And Ms. Walker?
Second.
There you go. All in favor, please give them a hand. No, I know it's a big job to solicit help, to get volunteers to make it happen, so truly it was great. Thank you, thank you. And I did schedule David Kell for our next meeting to come and talk about TIPS, so he'll be here on the 28th. And unfortunately, we have to cancel Music in the Park this year. A gentleman that was organizing it with loss of, I don't know exactly what happened, but he needed chairs and couldn't get chairs, and a couple of things happened with trying to make it happen last time, and he was frustrated, so he has pulled out from organizing that.
What kind of attendance did we get?
You know, there have been times when we had 120, there have been times when there's been 25. So it just, it would depend on the group and the weather and those kind of things, so. But we had advertised that, so I wanted to make sure, publicly make sure that people are aware of that. Okay. Renee, did you have something?
No, Mary, I didn't have.
All right, Chief Helfer?
Hello, I just have a couple of things. Two of the guys at the police department attained some anniversaries I just wanted to mention. Sergeant Tom Jaskiewicz attained his 15th year full-time in June, in '16 altogether with part-time. And then Officer Philip Greenbaum attained 13 years of service in June as well, so, and he started full-time with the department. And then Officer Greenbaum as well attended the SART meeting in Union County, which is a Sexual Abuse Response Team that we're a part of. And lastly, I met, or not met, I talked with John and made arrangements, coordination for the parade this Friday, so we're all set to go at 6:00 PM for the Steam Thresher Parade at 6 o'clock, so. Came up quick on us this year, so. That's all I have.
Questions? All right, thank you. Administrator.
Couple of things, working with Fergus and Nipoll right now. Identifying some possible OPWC grants for waterline replacement. Probably be getting some legislation in front of you over the next council meeting or two to move forward with those. We are also preparing for the Steam Threshers, which will be July 17 through the 20th. The parade is July 18 from 6 to 8:00 PM. We will be, we won't be, we contracted with Napper Tree Service to, we unfortunately have to remove four very large trees just south of here on South Chillicothe. They're, two of them are dying, they're ash trees, and they're dying from Emerald Ash Bore. And then two of them have some damage up top that require us to take them down. We will have that road closed, South Chillicothe closed between Bigelow and Jackson, and that will be next Wednesday, the 23rd. Because of that, it's, the cost is $5,000. We're going to use permissive funds for that to remove those trees. It was obviously an unanticipated cost. We do have money in permissive funds, however, should we have a winter like we had last year, I may have to come back before you and have some money re-appropriated for salt if it, if we have a bad winter. Let everybody know we'll be mosquito spraying again this Wednesday evening and Thursday, if the weather doesn't allow us on Wednesday, it'll be Thursday evening. Also, I wanted to mention Mac Fuller and Kenzie Arrington at the pool, lifeguards at the pool, both had saves recently, so I want to give them congratulations and job well done. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
What do we do with the four huge trees that we take down and what happens? What do we?
They'll, they'll take everything.
Take the tree away?
Yeah.
Do you assume they have some value, I guess that's why I ask?
One's a silver maple, two are ash trees, the other one, I'm not sure what it is, I can't remember, but those trees don't really have much value, especially if...
Other than firewood?
Yeah, other than firewood.
Silver maple, that's for firewood.
So are they not on private property? I forget, they're in the section yet?
They're between the street and the sidewalk, which is not developed responsibility.
All right, President Printem.
Not too much, other than I think this afternoon, the minutes from our meeting last time are circulated, so if you have any questions about that.
They just went to you for review.
Oh, okay, so they'll be coming to you all soon, I guess. And then just be kind of causal to the fact that we're going to be getting together for a budget at some point. I think Bob's got some on that later, but other than that, nothing.
Parker, can you do one, Parker?
We meet on July 23, I think at 6:00 PM.
Yep.
So we got it pretty full, Jim, so next time I should do it?
Thank you.
6:00 PM.
All right, Mr. Lafayette.
Couple of things that I think the last meeting Bob had asked me to, or in a council in general, but Bob raised the issue regarding the wind energy and radiation effects or radiative, how you call it, but effects of the wind turbines on radio waves and other things. I couldn't find a lot on it. The most I came up with was an article out of Wisconsin, and I don't know if anybody could find the same thing on Google, that basically indicated that with the larger wind energy projects, with the larger wind farms, that there was some reporting of that, but of the smaller, smaller individual wind energy projects for home use or whatever, that there have been no reported incidents on that. Now, I would hardly say that that's definitive, but that's all I could come up with on, since nothing jumped out. And I know that Mayor, you had sent something to Darren Lee to ask him to investigate a little bit for...
Yeah, I'm even responding, yes.
The other issue was Frank and Twilight Lee have filed suit in court on a mandatory action regarding the storms that were, and that's been, Renee's turned that over to the insurance thing, I'll send there.
Lantern Lane. Lantern Lane.
Lantern Lane, right. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Colleen, again, Sony?
We meet on Wednesday, so I do not have anything yet.
DZA?
We haven't had anything yet, but it looks like we'll be having something either July 30th or 31st.
All right, I see John is here. Did you want to give us an update, Rob Coe, anything?
Well, our next meeting is Thursday over at the library. The, I'm not sure Julie announced the last meeting, the car show has been moved from August 2nd to August 23rd due to conflict with when they were having a Benny's, it's probably going to have a little bit heavier drawl than ours. Other than that, we'll keep you posted.
You on the CIC?
No.
And personally, finance?
Only one item, and I put together the financial planning schedule for the balance of the year and sent it to all council members. The activities start with a work session on August 19th and wraps up on Monday, November 10th, as far as third final readings, assuming everything goes smoothly. The meeting on August 19th will be a review by all of council on financial performance year-to-date versus the budget, so that'll be a starting point. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Fire.
We had two resolutions this time, and one was for to pay part-time employees time and a half on holidays. We're just having a hard time getting help on holidays. And the other resolution was to put the levy on the ballot. In the maintenance, Brent's maintenance report, we spent $7,274.20 for tires, internal maintenance on the trucks and around the firehouse and stuff. We spent $1,439 for fuel. We had 27 fire runs and 69 EMS runs. And we approved the CE paving to redo the parking lot for $42,975. This guy had cracks in it, and they've temporarily fixed it for a large couple of times, so we decided we had the money and that was appropriate for this year to do that, so we're going to redo the parking lot. That's about it.
Jim, do they do EMS billing?
Do they do EMS billing? They do. Yeah.
All right, thank you. We're moving right along with the CIC. All business, we have the third reading of Resolution 1214, selling police impound equipment on govdeals.com in excess of $1,000. Motion to pass Resolution 1214. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Second reading of Resolution 1314, the state purchasing contract.
Yeah, I apologize, that is the third reading. I didn't get it changed on agenda.
Besting.
Purchasing contract, okay. So, third reading of Resolution 1314.
Move to pass third reading of Resolution 1314.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And second reading of Ordinance 314, trespassing and criminal damaging on government property.
Motion to pass second reading of 314.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have three items in the business. The first is to amend the B3 district, which allowed, wasn't a purposeful thing, but the way code was changed previously, allowed for first-floor residential in the uptown area, so this document changes that. Any questions about that, or only anything you want to say?
Do we have anyone living in those spaces at the moment? This wouldn't affect anybody currently?
We have one, but they moved out before, so there is none that I have. Okay, so. It's 414.
Motion to approve the first reading of 414.
I'd also need to set a public hearing as well. I'm getting a date here. It'd be August 25th.
Which would be the third reading.
Which would be...
So moved. Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next one is the amending of the sign code to allow sandwich board signs. This is the usual corner property. Addition of one, allowing for two for corner properties. And this is 4...
Five.
514.
Does this affect just maybe two properties?
It could be more. I mean, it depends if something went in in one of the buildings, but right now it's two or three.
And this would require public hearing as well?
In the same public hearing, yep.
So two total sign boards on the property?
For a corner property.
For a corner.
One on each side.
All right.
Right.
And so no other, any other spots other than those two? Just because sometimes I see four or five out, and this still would not allow that, it would only allow us to go to two.
Yeah, that's what precipitated it. There was an individual that came to council, or came to P&amp;Z, and that was one of the issues, that they had to number of signs, they had been talked to, I don't know, I can't remember if it was John or somebody had approached them and said, "You can't have that." And they were talking about, "Well, what if we own it upstairs and have advertising up there?" And, you know, that's, you know, at the end, there was a kind of a logical discussion through P&amp;Z, as I remember, everybody kind of walking through and trying to be reasonable, but also not to create a situation where there's signs, sign boards everywhere glittering the sidewalk, and so I think that's, P&amp;Z kind of came to the conclusion that two would be reasonable, one for each side on a corner plot.
Plus, if you have windows on it and one hanging side.
Yeah, those are, that's already existed.
None of the parking lots, and those are, still being violation of...
Yes, violation.
All right, so it's Ordinance 514.
Motion to approve 514.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And the public hearing on that is the same day?
Same day, yep. Second. We have one hanging out there that is the property maintenance code. That's not coming. It was emailed at one point, I think it just kind of got caught between vacations.
I looked for it, I could find it.
You could, so. We need to...
Property maintenance code?
That's one actually that, that P&amp;Z was doing to beef up the ability for John to do enforcement.
Yeah, that was, all right. Did we pass that out of P&amp;Z? I don't think we passed it out of P&amp;Z. Because I remember, I think I circled it out of P&amp;Z.
I think we circled it out of there. I'll look into it.
I'll look, I'll take a look tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure that that was something that was presented by P&amp;Z, it wasn't presented by council. And I don't know that P&amp;Z ever voted on it.
What? Okay, any more discussion on wind energy? Do we have that?
I don't have that, no. I think we're waiting on Darren Lee's.
Okay, research, sure. Any other discussion around any of these things?
We had a couple of questions. I had a president call me about the Oak Grove, just kind of wanted to know where it's stood. Why weren't we doing more to get it off the ground? I said, I said I would just bring it up to see where we're at, if anything new had transpired in our, since our last talk about it, which had obviously been a couple, couple weeks, maybe a month or two.
He had just emailed a letter again a couple of weeks ago, and Kevin has responded to him. He had said in the letter that they were now finished with New California updates and changes, yes. And looking again at to us, another letter that, you know, he felt like Hayden and Sony had told him, no, they were shutting down the project, and obviously that didn't happen. But he stated several things like that, so Kevin has responded to him and is waiting to hear back from him, so hopefully get it back on the table and see what we can do.
Would it, I mean, in our line of work, where we, you know, sending letters back and forth sometimes isn't the way, does it make sense to sit in a room, maybe even get a mediator and just kind of hammer this out?
Well, Jim had asked about that as well, and had talked to two, three people. I'm sure they would be open to that, if we want to do that. I think we have a starting point. I mean, I think everybody had agreed to enlist at one point, as did, as he did. Just along the way, there's been a couple of things that just keep being that hangup point. So, yes, can we do that again?
I mean, he may even, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, he probably tends to gain more than anybody out of this, so I would assume his interest is high, perhaps even even pay for the mediator, at which point there would be no reason for us not to do that, as soon as possible.
I recommend that to him, or make this suggestion to him.
Yeah, the contention mediation. I can recommend the mediator if that's...
Yeah.
You said you had a couple, do you have something else?
Um, yes. The, I think it's Maple Street property that we sent a letter to regarding the siding.
Yes.
Looks like they had started it and then just kind of not finished it.
They are having some challenges with their contractor, and that's what stopped it previously. The contractor just left. They've since gotten that contractor back and started doing some work and...
The guy that had problems with the re...
Well, they, I think there was some, some finances exchanged, and that's what is throwing that. So, I know John's keeping an eye on it. I've expressed your concerns to him about getting that done. And unfortunately, I think going back to that maintenance code, he's having some challenges getting something to stick with not having siding and what to cite him for, so he's just trying to work nicely with them to get some resolution.
Do we have a whole other code that we need to fill?
And that's what they were talking about, that maintenance code, of trying to tighten some things up to give John some additional teeth to be able to write something against.
And John is compiling a list of things that need to be addressed in the uptown for each building. He also is touching base with the building department about, there was a question about the buildings that we now have foundation issues, so he was just touching base with them to see what their role is and how much they know. And, and I have asked him to come to that first meeting in August. I'd like to come on that date.
Kevin, did the engineer's office, I thought they would look at one of those buildings that had the problems with the bricks in the rear.
The building department did.
Building department did. Did they come back with a report or finding?
I believe they asked the building owner to come back with an engineer's report. I have not seen that engineer's report, so I'm not sure what, what was in it.
One other question, not to monopolize the time. With the lead litigation, I'm assuming we ultimately get a litigation report from the insurance company?
Yeah.
Their viewpoints on this, when should we expect that? Well, it just, I mean, literally was just filed, I think I got it in Friday. And what'll happen is they'll assign counsel, and I'll coordinate with their counsel, I'll be their point of contact. I mean, it's the same type of work that I do, so I know what they have to do, I know their reports. They generally will have 30, 60-day reports, you know, get their 28 days to do the answer and get some initial discovery. They're going to get their arms around the case. They'll do a preliminary analysis, I'll make sure that we get a copy of what their views are on it.
Who is the judge assigned?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't know. It's filed in Madison County, so I'm thinking, at, for at least a preliminary point, it's, it's Mr....
Judge Costello.
This is the circuit time round. I was going to ask you a question. I did have, did we get any, we talked about the water tower committee last time and discussed its colors. Did we get a list of what colors are available?
We did. I have made asterisks, as you see, if this passes around, of my recommendation.
Still a light blue?
A shade dark.
Shade dark, yeah.
They will paint it any of those colors, is that...
So it was hot pink.
Which one you want, this one, not that one?
No.
Yell.
No.
That's what you do. Yell one.
The one that's sleepily, and the other one should be red, on the blue one, red color, and on the other, red one, hot.
That works.
That would be a twist of traction.
It would be.
Had somebody called one time and asked if the hot water tower was empty because they didn't have any hot water.
The power lights out on the... Don't, really?
Why not do red and black for Jonathan Alden?
You know, they vote on your levies.
I'm sorry?
They vote on your levies.
Oh, right. I know. Well, it's got the denominator, right?
Literally drained the entire tower that was like 180 yards away.
You don't care?
Put a bonnet on one, got a wide-brimmed beard on the other.
South Jefferson, she had yours again.
No one would see it.
Scarlet and gray. No? Are you Michigan? Where are you? All right. All right.
To the end of August.
Yeah, at the end of August 2nd.
Bright metallic blue, I like that one. Bright metallic, blue. What, could you create a big outdoor cabin and do it, the stuff are Michigan colors? The big M on it? No, just put M on it, just create an outdoor.
I'm assuming all we paid for is just one color, um, that's it, right? So like if we wanted something more. What if we did a stencil of something else? We paid by the letter for stencil?
It is very expensive for artwork and, like if we wanted to do our logo, it'd be, they have to, because of the size of it and. Down below, looking up, they have to adjust, I'm sure that's where, how they have to adjust.
It's kind of like the sidewalk.
What'd you pick, Colin?
I just think if you go with a lighter color, it's not gonna fade as much.
It would seem some kind of special.
It is. I mean, it's, it's denimic paint, and it's got to be a certain thickness, and it's actually measured by, you know, we pay the engineer to make sure that there's certain mileage of paint on there. And the paints have gotten much better since when they were painted last.
I just think it'd be nice to have our logo on it, Wi-Fi contract, which I don't think the blue you put, putting that logo on, it's not gonna really make it.
We spoke to them about the logo, and they said it would be very expensive. They didn't give us a price, but if you guys want a price to put the logo, I could certainly ask.
We could at least get Plain City.
It comes with just stenciled letter, Plain City.
What if we just put PC, we get a discount for that?
Well, you're gonna like a wrap with a logo, like a little vinyl wrap. You could put that on there.
Just gonna argue that that's not ours.
It saves us 20 grand not to put the words Plain City on there.
All right. I mean, if, if that's something you want to look into in advertising, then I think we need to do a little bit of research about that and try to figure that out because once it's there, it's there. And then if there's any changes and who does what and what grade they have to do it.
Sure, it's all contractual thing.
Right, but just, I don't, and I don't even know, I guess we should check that out. But just like he was saying, the depth of the paint, the type of paint, all that stuff is dictated. And so we would have that cost on whomever, whomever. And that cost might be prohibitive to anybody but one entity in the village.
We discussed it in our pre-con meeting, and both the engineer and the painter tried to persuade us very heavily to not do something like that. Why? Just the cost, and then just you get into what happens if that business goes out and you've got their logo up there. What if it's a logo that isn't community-friendly?
Can you put the outdoor vinyl on?
I doubt it would stick. I doubt it would stick to that because of the condensation, the weather.
So they have new, that's pretty strong. They have new outdoor stuff that's pretty strong.
And we can always continue to, to look at this. Obviously, the tower gets painted regardless of whether we're putting that up there or not. So if it's something that you guys want to chew on, even after the tower's painted, we could always go back up and, and.
You know, I mean, obviously, I was a little run up. I don't think that there's a lot of support for it here, which is fine, because in, I mean, reality speaking, it's probably cost prohibitive to any and every business within Plain City as to what we would have to charge to make it even worth our time and kind of putting our stamp on it. So I understand, I'll let it die.
Okay, was there anyone that wanted to press counsel this evening? Okay, anything else?
Paul, we were talking about the, the village re-legalization last week in our work session. You said you may have some references of attorneys that could help us look into the variance and easements.
Right. Easements and variances and stuff like that, my friend, if it's dealing with more complex, you know, of some of the, I don't know, some of the more complex issues involving grants and bond issues and things like that, I, I don't do it. I haven't done that. As far as easements and variances and, you know, any kind of easements and any kind of transactional work with regard to even dealing with contractors and construction and everything like that, we can handle. Doug, who's been here before, was general counsel for Capos and Construction. He's done everything under the sun. And so we can handle a lot of that in-house and keep the cost down quite a bit from some of the proposals that, that are out there. But, but certainly if it's a bond type issue, there is, there are two specific attorneys. And I know before I went on vacation last, or two weeks ago, I know you sent me an email, and I sent an email to them asking for them to give you an idea of what their rates were and everything. And I don't think I heard back while I was gone, so I'll come up with that tomorrow.
Paul, that reminds me of a question. Please don't take this the wrong way, but we hired, the village hired you as the solicitor.
Right.
As far as using the firm, however, the firm is not the solicitor for the village. So is there an issue there in the sense that, you know, we didn't hire Doug Holphas?
Actually, I think.
And if that is passed on, if, you know, effectively, we're deciding to use that particular law firm because of your relationship, does that create an issue for us in the sense that whenever we use a, a service, we have to go through a process by which our selection is based upon, you know, a whole host of fairness issues?
Right.
So just throwing that out there. I don't want to have any perception.
I'm not sure. I'll have to look at the original engagement, but I want to say the original engagement was me and my firm. And I think that was, I'll go back and take a look at it. That's a fair issue to bring up. Certainly, if it's, you know, there are, you know, again, dealing with easements and stuff like that, that's stuff that I can personally do. But if it's something more complex that, you know, I would think was more Doug's bailiwick, I'll take a look at that issue and see if there's a potential.
I didn't want to create any problems, but I just wanted to make sure.
Fair point.
Good, thank you. Great.
Motion to adjourn.